Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 26, 2021 School Committee Meeting. We have just returned from executive session. All members are present, and we're going to jump right into our agenda. We don't have any minutes this evening. I'll start with oral communications, school committee individual comment. Anyone? Okay, Lisa and then Stacy.
Yeah, I know I have to change my name. I see it. I just wanted to say a thank you to the extended school year staff, all the teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, especially Victoria Briggs and Kelly Camp, and I probably shouldn't start naming people because I know so many people do a lot of hard work, including Keith and Susan. But it was, you know, a really strong program, and I know it's a lot of hard work to shift gears and go straight from the school year into extended school year. It was really, I, you know, feel like it went really smoothly, and I just wanted to thank everybody for making that happen.
Great, thanks. Stacy?
I just wanted to unofficially welcome everybody back. Summer is not over yet, and school doesn't start till next week. So, welcome back next week. I am, I am still at the beach. It is summer. But welcome back to everyone, and I'm very excited for all the new experiences and the new, just the excitement of the newness, and, you know, it's definitely not September 2020, so I'm excited, and let's go. Let's have a great year.
Okay. Thank you. Central Office, Keith?
Just one quick update. I gave you one last week on the field. They've up, they've twice now upgraded their completion date. They're, they're supposed to be completed by tomorrow. At 3:30, I have a, I have a, my first closeout meeting of two closeout meetings with them. You know, the tomorrow's meeting is kind of go over where we have to store some materials, you know, the, the basically attic stock for the black pellets and some extra areas of carpet in case we need to do any repairs. And then the, we'll start the punch list tomorrow and then finish the punch list on Monday, but we should have children back on the field next week.
That's really exciting, given the fact that we had what, you know, a hurricane and a tornado in the middle of our, you know, install here, right?
Yeah, and again, just remind everyone, you know, the, the process that they use is that, you know, they have a team of people come in to tear up the field, a team of people to, to check the, you know, the, the base layer and resmooove that out, add some material. You know, another team to come in and lay the initial carpet down, another team to come in and sew in all the lines, and another team come in and, which is part of the, the fourth team. But a new, some new people came in to actually put the black pellets and sand down for cushioning. It's, it's an amazing thing. So when something gets held up for weather, whether it's at here or before here, it all kind of gets stacked up, so.
Domino effect.
It was a fascinating process to watch them kind of come in in these, these groups of, you know, six to eight people, but, you know.
Yeah, driving by yesterday, I wouldn't have been able to say, are they going to be done? Like, I wouldn't have expected them to be done until next week, so that's great news. Okay. Joni, do you have something?
Just want to say I'm really excited to start the school year with everybody. I went to each school's welcoming or tours, and I saw a lot of very excited students and parents, so can't wait to see them all during school.
Great, thank you. Dr. Cuska?
Yeah, just echoing, looking forward to seeing staff on Monday and hoping to have as much normalcy as we can despite the last minute changes that I'll be talking about tonight. And I do want to invite the school committee, if you're available. We are having a keynote speaker on Tuesday, and I would have, we, we had to scramble to change our keynote speaker short, on short notice. So we do have a keynote speaker coming in to speak on equity on Tuesday from 8 to 9, Joni, in the high school auditorium, so you're welcome to come in. There should be enough seating. We can spread out and do every other seat. We're also gonna be able to project it elsewhere if we have to for a small number of people, so we have a plan in place for that, but I think it'll be a great start to the school year.
Great, thank you. I do not have anybody registered for public comment this evening, so I'm gonna move on to, we're gonna move on to policy. Sorry, go ahead, Joni.
No, that's all right. I just also wanted to say with a very successful new staff orientation, a day and a half with all our new staff coming in, mentors attended the second day also. So, a very dynamic group of very energetic staffs. We're, we're excited to welcome them to the Holliston community.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, I'm gonna move down to policy. We have no presentations this evening, so we're gonna move down to policy, and we're gonna discuss policy EBCFA regarding face coverings. That should have been included in your packet, and I don't know, do we need to pull it up on screen so we can take a look at it? I know we need to read it again. Catherine, you don't have to. Someone else can read it if you would prefer.
I can share, but I, I think you only have to read the changes at this point since it was a policy that was in effect before. I don't know. They have to read the whole thing. Am I wrong on that?
Um, I don't, so it's tough because it's like, this is the same policy we had before. We just tweaked it slightly, so, but we had rescinded the previous policy. So I actually just process would feel better if we just read it all the way through with the new changes. I'm sorry. But we're back on track in terms of time, so I'm feeling okay about it. So whoever the fast talker is, I, you know, when I, policy previously, I had Lisa Koshon read it because she's a super fast talker and is still clear.
I used to do cross-examination debate. I can talk really fast.
See? And she's from Texas, y'all.
Y'all. Do you want me to, you want me to go?
Go for it.
Face coverings, EBCFA. The Holliston Public Schools is committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, in accordance with guidance from the Center for Disease Control, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the following requirements are in place until further notice. An appropriate face covering can be disposable or reusable and must be clean, fully cover the nose and mouth, and secure under the chin, be made with at least two layers of breathable material, fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face, and be secured with ties or ear loops. More tightly woven materials such as cotton fabrics with higher thread counts are preferable while elastic materials are not recommended due to the higher pore size and lower filtration efficiency. And there's a citation Harvard 2020. Based on guidance from health authorities, neck gaiters, open chin triangle bandanas and face coverings containing valves, mesh material or holes of any kind will not be considered appropriate. Further face coverings are not required to be surgical masks or respirators such as N95 masks. A face mask or face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals when in school buildings and on school transportation even when physical distancing is observed. All students in grades preschool through 12 plus are expected to wear a face covering as described above. Individuals, hold on, I have to scroll down. Individuals may be temporarily excused from the requirement for the following list of reasons per CDC guidance. The individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, cannot remove a mask or face covering without assistance. Furthermore, face masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical behavioral or other challenge making it other, making it unsafe to wear a face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver. Additionally, face masks or face coverings are not required as noted below during supervised, supervised mask breaks and while eating or drinking. When outside, mask are recommended for high contact sports. Unvaccinated individuals must maintain at least three feet of distance inside when unmasked. A student's mask or face covering is to be provided by the student's parent, guardian, or guardians. Staff members are responsible for providing their own face coverings. However, HBS will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at a building or board school transportation without one. If students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parent or guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate, or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. Violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school or district facility. This policy will remain in place until revised or rescinded by the school committee. Do I have to read the reading, first reading, et cetera?
No, just the policy itself. Thank you. Okay, does anybody have, can somebody, well, I guess we're still sharing, but I'm gonna kind of scroll down. Does anybody have any questions or comments they would like to make on the policy or, there we go. Lisa?
So, unvaccinated individuals must maintain, maintain at least three feet of distance inside when unmasked.
As in like during eating?
I think we would want that for every, wouldn't we kind of want that for everybody, though? Because we don't really know who's vaccinated and unvaccinated.
So we know that the pre-K through six is not.
So the issue is if we put that in for everybody, Lisa, I can't, I can't at high school ensure that we can maintain three foot distance for every high school student at this time, and the discipline concerns related to that. It would be very distracting to education. The reason that I suggested this be added is because the test and stay protocol references this. In order to be considered for test and stay, if you're unvaccinated, you would have to have been able to indicate that you were at least three feet distance from all day when unmasked or snacked, so that, that doesn't apply to vaccinated people right now. The language that Desi's put out is contradictory because it's saying there are no distance requirements when inside. However, if you want to test and stay and not have to quarantine, these, you know, these are the exceptions they've given us. So I'm trying to make sure that unvaccinated people would have the opportunity to not have to quarantine automatically if they can stay three feet when unmasked.
So we're saying we're not gonna ask people to maintain any distance when they're masked, right?
When they're, yes, that's correct.
I'm just questioning that because I feel like Delta is so much more contagious. I feel like the masks are definitely, you know, the number one priority in terms of protecting the unvaccinated population, but I guess I'm just wondering if, I don't want to, I don't want to require physical, I don't want to say everybody has to stay three feet apart at all times, but I'm just wondering if we should at least encourage physical distancing as another mitigation measure as, as much as practicable or something? I don't know.
So you, you could say physical distance is, is still recommended when feasible, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not, yeah, okay, recommend.
I mean, I know it doesn't really have teeth.
The only thing is.
I respect that that's not something we really want to be enforcing at this point, but I also don't want to leave the impression that it's only when you're unmasked that you have to worry about the distancing.
But can we encourage that as part of the health and safety plan and not part of the policy? Because policy is, you know, you have, this is what you're supposed to be doing, and so I don't want the teachers to be in the position of saying you're not following the policy, which says you should be staying, you know, three feet distancing.
Yeah, but we put in recommendations, we put in stuff in policies all the time that are just like, we recommend you do this, or we encourage that. We've done that a million times. I'm thinking of the wellness policy. The wellness policy was riddled with, we're not going to be able to enforce, but things.
That is true. I'm just trying to keep it clean.
We already have in there, and that was a recommendation from policy subcommittee, when outside masks are recommended for high contact sports. So again, we can't enforce that, but it's, it still makes it clear that there are some concerns with, for example, tackling in football, and they're all in a hurdle or huddle together, you know, things like that, that we, that's not, still not ideal.
I'm fine with this, with the suggest, the sentence that Susan suggested would cover my concern.
Okay.
Do people have objections? Or do, does anybody have an objection to adding that sentence?
I don't object to it. Okay.
Hopefully Susan can remember what she just said.
Yeah. Can we repeat this? I don't have it in front of me right now.
Distancing is.
Physical distancing is recommended at all times.
When feasible.
Yeah. Where, where do you want to put that specifically?
Just right after that sentence that about unmasked people.
Unvaccinated individuals must maintain at least three foot of distance inside when unmasked?
Yeah.
And then right after that.
Question like, so what is everyone else doing for physical?
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. Okay.
And where, where it encourages eating lunch outside, is that something, you know, even if we don't have tents, we're going to allow middle school, high school to eat outside and the younger grades to eat outside when, when we have monitors, or how is that working?
Yes, that there, we're encouraging outside eating for, and outside mask breaks as much as possible. Even if we don't have tents, Keith is still looking into tents, but, you know, this late in the game, I don't know what our chances are in getting them.
Yeah, a lot of districts haven't been successful at getting those, I, I have heard.
It's, you know, we've run into the, as crazy as it sounds, the newest wedding season with regards to commitments that have happened where people postponed weddings that, you know, again, the tents are being, are just spoken for. We can't get a long-term relationship to try to get a tent from September through November. It's been virtually impossible.
Beyond just the tents, the staffing, do we have staffing to support encouraging taking kids outside from, from elementary school through, I mean, are we through middle school?
No, we don't. I mean, our contract does not allow duties at the middle school, for example, for educators, so that we don't have enough bodies to help with middle school lunch. In fact, that was one of the concerns last year is that our middle school administrators were the only ones that do lunch duty. So this is why when I go over the health and safety recommendations, I'll, I'll show that to you in a little bit. We are hoping to allow a, a small amount of volunteers if they can be consistent and show a vaccination, if they could help us with these emergency situations for things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on the policy? Okay, I'd entered, oh, Stacy, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Josh Mann, who is on the Board of Health, joined our conversation the other day, and I thought it was, I thought it was helpful and fruitful, and I guess I just want to share with the committee because one of the things we were talking about is there's really no rubric for how and when to wear masks and, and, you know, when, when, when is the magic day when we can say to everyone, you don't need to wear a mask? Like, what made May 29th such a special day? Aside from my birthday, what made that such a special day, right? Like, what was that, what was so magical about that? And so, you know, Josh shared with us, it's not about, there's not an actual rubric, but we're following trends. And so we asked him if he would participate in our next couple of meetings. We anticipate as a policy subcommittee that we will be meeting or at least be thinking about this policy because the Jesse mandate ends October 1st as of right now, so we will certainly be on top of this because we anticipate there will be changes. And sure enough, after our meeting, the MIAA came out with its own guidance. So, you know, so I just.
The evolving discussion.
Yeah, it's an evolving discussion. It was really helpful because I said to him, I'm just, I'm struggling with this. We don't have a rubric. And so we're, we're working through it, and we're trying to get as much information as we can from the Department of Health.
Right, and Chief Cassidy has also been, you know, very helpful and helping to advocate for us as well. Go ahead, Dawn.
Was just going to say, and thank you for bringing that up. I know that, that the Jesse mandate as of October 1st allows some flexibility, I think, for those that are vaccinated, if we can show an 80% vaccination rate for staff and students. But my understanding is also we're waiting for in, some additional guidelines on how to implement that. And I would imagine that would come, we would need some sort of, of staff in terms of implementing it, right? Because we'd be checking on those 100 to 150 people in the building that could be unvaccinated to make sure they're complying with wearing masks when the, when, the unvaccinated are complying with wearing masks when the vaccinated would not have to wear masks. Is that correct? Is that, is there some sort of way to implement that and then make sure that, that unvaccinated are wearing masks? Do we, do we have any more information from Desi on what happens post October 1st, and if not, when do we expect it?
They said they're gonna be sending, I just got the updated FAQs and the information that they sent us this week, and they did indicate that they're gonna be sending out some more information. I forget what date it's, they, I don't know if they put the date, but shortly.
Didn't, they said shortly.
Yeah, shortly, so.
Should we, in light of that, should we just keep this on as an agenda item for September 8th and whatever other meeting we have before October 1st so that we can have an update on it? And, and, I mean, I'm sure policy will be meeting on it too. But because it's evolving, I think it would be helpful to continue to update the community on it in terms of what happens post October 1st. Thought it was really interesting when Desi voted that it was, it was Desi member Matt Hills that said he felt it was a straightforward, forward vote, but he also noted, and he noted that the same public health experts that were sticking their neck at, quotation, sticking their neck out both medically and politically last winter in support of the administration's move to force schools to reopen, to move from hybrid to full in person. Those same medical experts were the one that were in support of this new mask mandate. So it, it will be interesting to see what their recommendations on how we're going to implement removing it for the 80%. If we can reach that threshold, so get vaccinated so we can reach it.
Lisa and then Minnie, and then we get to move on.
I think the October 1st deadline, or it's not really a deadline, the, just throwing that date out there is a little bit of wishful thinking. I mean, I hope the Delta numbers are down by then, but I think it has, I mean, from my perspective, it has less to do with the vaccination rate because none of our kids under 12 can get vaccinated yet, and more to do with the Delta numbers. So until our kids can get vaccinated or the Delta numbers go down, you know, I don't know that we should be going to all the trouble of tracking exactly who is vaccinated and who isn't. Because even if we get to 80%, that doesn't cover kids that, you know, a large portion of our school population. If the Delta numbers come down, you know, then that's a different story. If, you know, if, if the Delta numbers diminish significantly, but, I don't know. I, I agree with Dawn, though, that I think we should just, you know, plan on revisiting this under COVID updates or, or whatever, at every meeting to update people. But I don't think there's anything, any magic about October 1st.
No, I don't either. It's just a placeholder.
On an ongoing basis, but I don't, I think October 1st is just a random date.
Yeah, I do want to just clarify, where, when we talk about our younger population who has no ability to get vaccinated, we will be keeping them at three feet for lunch and, preferably outside, but during lunch inside, they would be at three feet. But I just, it is not realistic if we're trying to get into normal education and doing group activities and given the guides we've been given about, we're not looking to sanitize, you know, all the surfaces like we needed to, they, you know, some of the things that we learned through COVID. So I just don't want to set the bar in an unrealistic expectation as well. We do want kids to be able to have normal interactions with a mask on, you know, in cleaning, wash, washing hands and wearing a mask have been proven to be the best mitigation factors. So I don't want parents or any of you to think that we can ensure a three-foot distancing in a, in a kindergarten classroom, in a first grade classroom, if they're really trying to engage in authentic instruction this year. And they, we had a great program last year, but it wasn't where it needs to be for this year.
Yeah, and I don't want to imply that I was asking for that. I mean, this isn't, this, the whole game here is mitigation. It's not elimination. I know, you know, every single one of us who's sending an unvaccinated child to school, me included, is accepting some level of risk. I'm, and you know, and I know it's not perfect, and I'm not trying to, I, I definitely don't want to imply that I want teachers somehow policing that children stay three feet apart at all times. I just think that we want to encourage distancing when it's possible, when it's feasible, when it doesn't make a difference anyway. Just as, you know, kind of another way to slowly bring down the risk, but I, I don't want to imply that, you know, I'm in any way hopeful that we can eliminate the risk.
Right. Okay.
And to that point, I do want, I talked to Dr. Slaney this morning, and she was reminding me that they're still going to be putting dots. Close areas, Keith, in the hallway so that when kids, just because they want kids to stay in the practice of staying, you know, six feet apart, I think she said, in the hallways. They got used to that. That's not a big ask to spread out when they're waiting to go home in the afternoon to get on the bus or get in the car and things like that. So that, that's just gonna be a practice, which is basically kind of what you're referencing, when, when it's possible, when it's feasible.
Okay, Minnie, are you all set? Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion to approve policy EBCFA face coverings as amended in this meeting.
Seconded by Stacy.
Moved by Catherine, seconded by Stacy. Roll call, vote. Ms. Bigelow? Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Dr. Savard? Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevic, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for the policy subcommittee for all your hard work on that. We are going to move on to communicate, uh, let's see, reports from subcommittees, reports from communications. Start with communications.
So communications had a meeting today. We have prepared a newsletter, but I think we should hold it, if we can just move us to the end, and then we will vote on and review a newsletter with the full committee at that time. We have other communications meeting set, and that is scheduled for September 14th at 9:00 AM.
Great, thank you. All right, policy, we just did. Do you guys have a meeting scheduled or no? That's okay. I'll let back to you after. Um, I'm sorry, Catherine, did you?
No, we don't have.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, budget?
Yeah, so I just wanted to quickly review something that we'll have to vote on in our next meeting. Normally would have met on this as a budget subcommittee, but we could not find a decent date over the last week or two that would work for everybody. So we will be voting on a capital budget proposal at our next school committee meeting on September 9th, is it?
Yes.
We will, before then, have a budget subcommittee meeting to talk about this in more detail. But just very briefly, we had a couple of placeholders that the FinCom and the town administrator had asked me about a couple of weeks ago for capital items, and so I just checked in with Keith, and one of them, one of them was technology-related, which is gonna kind of fall off the map because we're gonna deal with that in the spring by, just as a matter of protocol and practice going forward, we're gonna deal with Chromebooks at the annual Springtown meeting as needed. But I, I do think that I'm gonna ask the budget subcommittee to talk about keeping the $500,000 for rooftop units because in talking with Keith, we have a lot of rooftop units at every school, and they're all at the end of their, you know, recommended life cycle. So I don't know what the total number is. Keith, do you know the total number? I know you said we were talking about nine at the high school, but do you know how many total rooftop units we have?
Um, yes, the, the, it's actually 10 at the high school, nine of, one of them we replaced the guts for to extend its life. But total, we have, I think it's 10 at the high school, six at the middle school, and two at the elementary, not including the air conditioning unit, so the ventilation and heating units, there's two there, so I think it's 18. That's really off the top of my head, but I think it's 18.
Okay, so Keith and I had talked about, you know, just asking for, to keep that 500K for the rooftop units earmarked for the high school just in case any of these fail during the year, and the idea would be that we can always give back the money. We have given back money before when we don't use it. But just to kind of have that earmarked and not have to worry about that issue. So again, we'll talk about that in more detail at Budget Subcommittee, but just kind of wanted you guys to have a heads up. I didn't want to be asking you to vote on it at the next meeting without giving you any sort of chance to process it or, or ask questions. There are two other items that I'm just personally gonna ask about, and I'm gonna throw them out there to get them on your radar, even though I don't have much expectation that we have the bandwidth for this right now, but we have talked about in the past, in past years, about air conditioning for some portion of our school buildings to deal with June and September, particularly on the second floor. Some of our buildings get ridiculously hot in, in both June and September, and we've had this kind of on our wish list before in past years, and I would like to at least explore it in Budget Subcommittee to talk about, do we want to start thinking about signing aside money for just some portable units? Do we want to start thinking about a longer term plan to implement, you know, air conditioning for some of our buildings or whatever? So I'm just gonna throw that out there as a to be discussed. And then my other issue that I want to bring up to the Budget Subcommittee is outdoor amenities, outdoor classrooms, just like, you know, how we can't get tents. I, you know, I was hoping, I was pushing last year for us to build some kind of structures, you know, almost like, you know, just almost like a gazebo type structure or whatever, so that we have something semi-permanent for kids to use for shade or whatever for, you know, outdoor classroom space or lunchtime or whatever. So I would like to revisit that because we've been talking about that for years. We had students come in, I think, three or four years ago from middle school to present their plans for outdoor classroom space for the old flag building. Field. Field.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, we didn't have a chance to really follow up on that much. Money was tight, then COVID hit and it just kind of fell off the radar and I would like to revisit it. I'm not saying that I'm going to ask the budget subcommittee to come up with a proposal for fall town meeting, but I just want to get it back on everybody's radar as something to be discussed. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions about capital budget? Oh, and then, I'm sorry, the next step will be, once we approve it at our September meeting. So we make the recommendation to the finance committee, they vote on their recommendation. It goes to town meeting in the fall and, you know, like all of our budget items, it is up to town meeting to approve it or not. Any questions?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
That was quick. As promised.
I told you.
We have nothing on superintendent's evaluation. Oh, that's not true. Dr. Cuska forwarded me a program forum about, sorry, with a training on superintendent's evaluation and I forwarded that on to all of you. I'm just suggesting that the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee see whether that was possible for them to attend that.
Sometime in September, I forget the date.
I think it's 14th, but it's like in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to new business. And we will talk about ratification of the HFT contract. Do you want to talk about that first? I guess we'll talk about it first. Okay. So we have a vote for, we did come to a agreement, a one-year retro agreement with the Halston Federation of Teachers. It's a retro agreement for the 2020, 2021 school year. And it was ratified by the HFT leadership and the entire, sorry, the, the membership on Monday. And now it is up for us to vote for, is, is up to us to vote in favor or to not vote in favor of that contract. Do we need to read it? And I'm sorry, Susan, do we need to read it? The MOU?
No, you don't need to read it. I mean, you can share the amount and any other comments you have. You don't need to read the MOU.
Okay. Okay, so the we, the agreement was for a 2% COLA. And it keeps in place all of the other tentative agreements that were discussed in the previous MOU. And then we are looking forward to being able to continue the discussion with the HFT moving forward for a successor contract.
Did you say?
Retro. It did say retro. It was retro for the 2020, 2021 school year. Does anybody have any questions, comments? We, we did discuss this or reviewed it in executive session previously, so.
And this will also include teachers that have retired at the end of the 2021 school year, correct?
Yes, thank you for that distinction.
That actually, actually includes any teacher who worked at all last year.
Right. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the MOU as provided to the school committee dated summer 2021.
Second by Dawn.
Okay, moved by Stacy, seconded by Dawn. Roll call vote Ms. Bigelow?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lestevnik, yes. Fantastic. Do you want to read our statement? Or not, Dawn? Do you want to wait till newsletter, but you want to read the statement now?
I can read the statement right now. Just give me one moment. Halston School Committee reached a one-year retroactive agreement with the Halston Federation of Teachers for the 2020, 2021 school year. The retroactive agreement for a one-year collective bargaining agreement provides for a 2% salary cost of living adjustment retroactively for the 2021 school year. Following the HFT's vote in favor of the tentative agreement on August 24th, 2021, the Halston School Committee ratified the one-year contract on August 26th, 2021. We are grateful that this one-year agreement was reached as Massachusetts municipal finance law requires money set aside to fund school district salary increases to revert back to the town if unused prior to the next fiscal year. The Halston School Committee is responsible for providing the highest quality education for all students, balancing the availability of funds and the services our students need to succeed. Halston School Committee continues to work to obtain agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement. Halston School Committee and the HFT have been, have been engaged in contract negotiations since May of 2020 and continue to work diligently to come to a subsequent agreement. Following several unsuccessful mediation sessions in spring 2021, the parties are now required to attend fact finding, which is scheduled for October 12th, 2021.
Great. Thank you. All right, well done, everyone. All right, let's move on to the health and safety reopening plan. Dr. Cuska?
Hi, I did send this to you. I'm sorry that you didn't get it before today, but it's hot off the presses. I've been trying to put this together with the team the last few days and I was trying to get the links all up to date for you. So I did share it in your email, but I'll put it up on the screen. It is 10 pages, so I guess I would ask your input as to how you would like me to go through it. You know, I can go through it section by section, but it could take a while. So I would like your input on this. Should have showed up on the screen.
I'm not sure if anybody's had a chance, has anybody had a chance to really look at it? Because we literally just got to, oh, y'all did? Okay.
Some did. So I'll put it up on the screen and then we'll scroll through. And then any questions on each section, I can pause at the time.
That sounds good.
I'm going to try to make it a little bigger for you. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to insert a letter there, so that, don't worry about that. So the table of contents is all set to take it each section. The first section is on health protocols and I've linked in some of the guidance from CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics. The most recent version of D E C D P H protocols for responding to COVID-19. And the D E C FAQs that are, came out on August 20th and we're just, just updated on yesterday, August 25th. So I barely saw that they had changed it, but I got those in here today. So the Halston Schools is going to continue to utilize key health pillars to mitigate public health risks of COVID-19 in the schools. These pillars are the foundation of our efforts to mitigate risk and provide healthy school environments for students, staff and their families. So I, and the next section is about face coverings. This really just talks about that we're going to be implementing policy E B C F A. And I also put in the link to the D E C mask requirement, which talks about the 80% in order to, 80% of the school would have to have vaccination in order to be unmasked past October 1st. And some of the other implications of that are in this document. Next is a section on hygiene, again, reminding people that the best mitigation on, on top of masking is using soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol can be used, which we'll be continuing to use at our entrances and at recess when the kids go out. We did have to get, I think Missy Jordan, our nurse leader, has reached out to our pediatrician, our district pediatrician, who will have to sign off again for allowing us to use the 60% alcohol hand sanitizer in, in, in school buildings. We completed, I created a form and, and I borrowed some of this from other districts. I mean, on short notice, trying to pull this together. So the superintendents and other districts have been great about sharing. So the health self-assessment is a little different this year, but just, we've made a little tool here that will help walk people through the same questions similar to last year of what to do if you have symptoms and whether to isolate a quarantine. So this kind of walks them through the initial decision-making about what, what would have you pause before you even enter the building and decide to stay home. And I think the biggest thing this year is going to be to remind people, when in doubt, call your nurses, you know, if you're not sure. Because the protocols keep changing, as you know, all last year we kept changing and updating. The nurses were trying to do a visual similar to what the flowcharts we had last year, but they're concerned that it's, it's getting so hard to, for people to understand that and some of the conflicting information we're getting. So they feel the best protocol is really to encourage parents, if you have questions before you bring the kid to school, call the nurses and they'll let you know, even if it meant the child coming in a little bit late, we would rather the parent reach out to make sure that it's safe to bring the child to school if they're not sure. And then we'll tell them what the next steps would be. The next section is just really reminding people we are encouraging everybody to get vaccinated because that's going to be our best mitigation. Once the vaccination is available for all students, that will help us get back to hopefully being unmasked. But the only way to even consider unmasking at any level is if 80% of all staff and students in that building are vaccinated. So if we're ever going to get to being unmasked, we need the majority of students and staff in a building to be vaccinated. Next section is on the state test and stay and symptomatic testing. I did apply last Friday while I was out on vacation for a couple of days. I did apply. Got it in in the nick of time. The protocol for the, the state is going to give us the ability to have some rapid tests performed weekly with students. Also, if we have students that are a close contact in school because someone was tested positive, we no longer are automatically going to have to quarantine students. We have the ability to, if they were within six feet but are asymptomatic, they can stay in school and get tested for five days. This is where that piece about the unvaccinated person is important. I'll, I'll show you further down. Actually, I have the, I linked the state COVID-19 testing protocols, which goes into this in more detail. So I don't know if you need me to go over that. It's a document that we'll have there available for people to read. It is kind of long, but we put the summaries of what would allow us to do the routine testing, symptomatic testing and then test and stay protocols as well. Questions so far?
I have a question. So did you, you, we applied for pool testing as well, right?
It's all, we applied for all of them. And then, then we'll be sending out, once I get, I, I still have to work with our C I C coordinator. And once we get the start date of that, we'll be then sending out a, there's going to be a website that parents can log on to consent. And when they consent, they consent to all of the above is what happens because it depends on the circumstances of what we can offer. If people don't consent, then they would have to quarantine. That is the issue in some of these cases. You can't. And, and that's the reason for really strongly encouraging this. We're no longer saying just because you were a close contact, you automatically have to quarantine. Now we have the ability to keep children in school if they do some of the mitigation that we have here with these testing strategies.
So that can actually boost our pool testing numbers.
It should, because if it's a way to keep kids in school, then I would think parents would want it. Yeah.
Are we going to be able to, do we know a date? I'm sure we don't. But do we have any sense of when we might get what we need from the state in order to start doing the weekly pool testing?
I just got the emails yesterday, so I have to. We are in contact with the C I C coordinator. We haven't gotten a call back from them, so I can get into the website, but I can't log on yet. So they have to do some more steps with us before we can get there. So I don't know. I'm assuming it's going to be a pretty quick turnover, but your guess is as good as mine at the moment, but I'll get that out as soon as I know.
Okay.
Dr. Cuska, in terms of test and stay, we had those rapid Bionics, Abbott Bionics rapid antigen tests last year. Do we still have some so that we can implement test and stay next week, the following week, before we wait for more from the state? Just so we can avoid quarantining kids if they're close contacts? Do we still have tests from last year?
So we do have some tests. Missy was just making sure. I'm pretty sure she checked the shelf life on those, but she was wanting to confirm that because we've had them left over. The, the issue I have is until it's a setup, there's some technology that has to take place as well. I have to get the parents to be able to consent electronically in order to be able to use them. So if there's any way to offer it with a paper consent or something, we'll look into that. But I mean, part of this is really that we're going to be struggling staff-wise to get this implemented very quickly because we're trying to open school at the same time. So I'm hoping the fact that we're all coming back masked right now gets us time to get this in place so that if we get to a, a place where we're less masking or in different grade levels, it would be even more important at that time to have this in place, but the sooner the better for sure. So the next section also has the link to the protocols responding to COVID-19 from D E C. And it also talks about what happens when you test positive. You do, if you're positive, you do have to isolate for a minimum of 10 days after symptom onset or after positive PCR or antigen test if asymptomatic. So we still need the, the test to be a PCR test. And the, once we get a positive test, the quarantine still takes place at that point. But this is where the close contacts is talked about again, if you've been within six feet of a positive individual while indoors for at least 15 minutes during a 24-hour period, you're still considered a close contact. That is why the test and stay protocol is going to be so important. We're not saying you're not a close contact if you're within three feet or less. We're saying that we might be able to let you stay in school if you consent for these testing. One thing I do want to say, which I know that I was talking to Missy today, one of the important things she wants to remind everybody, if people have to quarantine that are asymptomatic, but they have, um, this, well, there's two plays with the quarantine. If, if you have to quarantine and get a PCR test, they do have the tests now that you can get at the pharmacy, but they're not considered as reliable because we can't ensure who actually took this test, who actually swabbed. Did they do it correctly? It really is important that we have a medical professional or someone that's been trained in this to give the PCR test. So we are requiring a PCR test. It cannot be one that you obtain at the pharmacy, even though we would love to be able to do that. We still have to be sure that's been done properly and we get the right results when we're potentially impacting other students and staff.
Dr. Cuska, I had an additional question, and that is that the test to stay seems to draw a distinction between those that are vaccinated and those that are not. Are, when do, when will we start to collect this information or, and what do people have to provide?
Right, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to put together a plan to get copies of students and hope, and staff at some point, vaccination cards. So we'll know, we'll have an actual list of people who, the shorter list would be those who are unvaccinated at the upper levels, but certainly at the lower levels, we know all of our students, the younger levels are not going to be. So once we put that list together, we'll have an ability to tease us out a lot quicker. Until then, we would have to ask each time, are you a close contact? And if you have been vaccinated or not, they're going to have to disclose that. The problem I have is if you, if you don't disclose that you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, we have to presume that you're not vaccinated. If you say, I choose not to tell you, then I'm going to have to treat you like a quarantine at that point and we won't be able to use test and stay protocols. So it, you know, we can only act on the information that we have. So even though it's not going to be mandatory to disclose that information, by not disclosing, it puts you at a disadvantage to not be able to stay in school, unfortunately.
Dr. Cuska, do you know whether or not they will accept whether or not a, a health record from your pediatrician would be sufficient, or do they want to see the actual card? Because my kids' vaccinations are now listed on their health record because I provided them with a copy. But does a school need to have a copy of the kid's health, of their COVID vaccine specifically?
We're still working through some of this, but that was my thinking as well there, that because you get vaccinations for other things and the doctors submit those as well. But I think we only submit them, what, fourth grade, seventh grade, 10th grade normally? So yes, if, if it's, if it's signed off by a doctor on that, all the vaccines and that's there, we can accept that as well.
Thank you.
Just another section about notifications and data sharing. I was hoping that I wouldn't have to do it dashboard again to show COVID cases. Let's hope I don't. I'm not planning on initially. I mean, if we don't have cases, I'm not going to be putting out a dashboard. But obviously, just like last year, if we start getting spread and have to communicate, I'll be letting people know of positive cases like we did in the past. Keith, do you want to talk about the ventilation, cleaning and sanitizing briefly?
Sure, um, you know, ventilation, I mean, this is just a simple statement on that we're going to continue to both, you know, make our attempts to maximize the fresh air coming in and exhausting bad air out through our appropriate ventilation systems, which as, as you all know, were inspected last year and, and, you know, said they were up to code and well cared for, et cetera, et cetera. as you all know, were inspected last year and, you know, said they were up to code and well cared for, et cetera, et cetera. We do have air purifiers in every single room. And I do have an inventory of spares that we can utilize as well. So any room that, you know, any classroom that a child is in, we will, it will have purified air. We're going to try to minimize the air recirculation. So any rooms that use fans, we're trying to install them in a fashion in the window. So they shoot the fresh air up and let that trickle down rather than the fresh air across from student to student. You know, we're going to continue to maintain the HVAC systems as we have in the past. We've had, you know, good success with that and good reports from two different independent parties. We'll utilize one of the independent parties, our third party, when we do have challenges that we can't meet with our own staff, which we've always done, which is why we're in the condition we are. And again, as we did last year, we're going to use the highest filtration through our HVAC system that we can. Some of the trays, you know, as much as we want to put the MERV 13 to have the filters into them, some of them can't take one that's that thick. So we do, we get it as thick as we can. And, you know, I don't believe anything has under a MERV eight right now. So we're going to continue cleaning and disinfecting the buildings. We're not going to be doing it to the degree we did before because truthfully, we were putting chemicals in places that were not deemed as being affected through multiple studies. So we're going to do our daily, our more than our typical daily cleaning, but not as much as we did during the school day and then our typical night, you know, cleaning and sanitizing as we have in the past. We're going to keep hand washing and sanitizing stations available to students on an ongoing basis as we did last year. Hand hygiene is one of the layers of mitigation that the CDC talks about. So we're going to continue to do that. Transportation, D E S I guidance was real simple, which is basically the way we ended last year is the way we're starting this year, which is windows open two inches or more when the weather facility allows for that. Students, all students masked, sanitizer available at the bus. And again, we can, we can, there is no distance between students issue there. So yes, that's, that's a fine, oh, I go down to meals, I'll skip forward to the meals. We're going back to a more traditional lunch. Lunch is still free next year. The federal government has made lunch free for all students again. So there's no food insecurity issues going forward for another year. So what we're going to be doing is as opposed to having it be basically a single offering grab and go, which a lot of last year was, we're going to be making it, the children will be able to choose their lunches from up to three offerings a day. And we'll be using our normal cashiers to help facilitate that selection and get the children through the line. Susan Polaski was working with the principals from each of the schools on that, make sure they're comfortable with the time that the children will be in lunch line and have to eat. And as of right now, we're feeling pretty good about where we are. The elementary complexes, we're worried about distancing at lunch with our three feet and the lunch tables, which are challenging sometimes. We do have some plans and we are purchasing docs when necessary. And so we will go from there. So again, we're going to be encouraging as much eating in either outdoors or in common places that will allow us to create more spacing as well. So it's, you know, we'll continue to work on that and adjust as needed. So.
Lisa?
I didn't realize all of our water fountains were off, although that makes sense. And I'm sure that I was told that at some point. But I'm wondering if it makes sense in light of that to, you know, ask for some more water bottle filling stations through ARPA. I'm imagining that's a pretty small amount of money. And Cynthia, based on what you said, we still have some time to ask for ARPA funds, right?
Keith, what was the ratio? I mean, I didn't hear any concerns.
Yeah, the, the, the challenge is, is that to put those in place, we have to be very careful where we put them because they do stick out into the hallway. So they have to be placed in place, you know, in places that first can handle that. Second off, that have a place that can drain water. They don't always fit into the existing places where we do have the water bubblers. So it's, it's, it's very, not very limited, but it's limited in where we can actually put them. So we, we, we do have them at least two per building, I think it is. And there may be more than that at the middle of the hive. I'm just trying to remember. I know where, I know where two are in each building, maybe two per building. And we didn't hear any issues with that last year, in all honesty, of lack of access to them.
Were they open and available?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, all the bubblers are. Not the bubbles, it's going to be the bottled.
The water. Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, filtered water. So, I mean, I, I, I'll take out to, 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 what I'll do for you, Lisa, is I'll make sure I walk around and see if I think there's any other places that we currently have bubblers in that we could see if we can get another one in. But, you know, when you put water in a place, it's not about getting, I can get water to any place in the building. I can't get water out of any place in the building. You know, it's the drain, that's the problem. It's not the supply. So that's, that's the challenge there. So.
Right. I think we had this discussion previously when we were trying to add more of those water stations throughout the buildings, Keith, when we got those, some grant money that we had received. And that was sort of, that was the issue then, as it is today still. So.
Right. Well, again, we don't have a basement. So, I mean, think of your own home. You know, if you're putting, if you're adding water to your second floor of your house, if you have a second floor, it's about, you know, I can't just put that anywhere in the house. Where on the first floor, you pretty much can because you have a basement to work through, let's finish basement. But you have a basement to work through to get, to get the piping there. My, I have slab construction here. So I can't get it, I have to, that's something that's there already. So.
Do you need, so you need very different drainage for a water bottle filling station than you do for a bubbler?
No, but the bottle filling station will not necessarily fit into where a bubbler was. So we're now either taking chunks of wall out. It just, it's not a simple project as, as it would seem.
You'd think they'd retrofit, but they don't.
Yeah, are there, are there only one or two possibilities? I mean, are there smaller ones that would fit where the bubblers go? I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I do want to make sure that if we're not providing bubblers, I want to make sure kids stay hydrated, especially in the warmer months.
It's, again, we had absolutely no complaints last year. I did not hear one. You know, so again, I'll take a look around. We certainly can't push, put them in the elementary classroom that has, elementary classrooms, excuse me, that have the, the water bubblers at the sink area, you know, where they have the little sink areas in each of the classrooms. That's an impossibility. They have to be wall mounted.
They have sinks. They could fill the water, they could fill a water bottle from a sink.
At the sink, right. And they might not fit the bottles under. But I will certainly ask the principals, but I mean, I heard no concerns about kids not having access to water. We'll double check this year again.
Okay.
And I just had one more quick comment. I'm just wondering if we could add a sentence on the ventilation piece that includes part of what you just said about, and it's also in that paragraph that you sent out to us in response to ventilation questions. Just a sentence or two that says, we did have a third party look at our system last year. They said we're good to go. I just, I think Keith, what you said in that paragraph that you sent to all of us was perfect. And I'm just wondering if we could maybe take a little bit more out of there and put it in this so that it's crystal clear that this is something that we've considered and reviewed and all of that.
I would also second that and also ask that you even mentioned the fact that you said none of them have less than a MERV eight at a minimum. So I think it might be, you might want to include that tag.
I, I, that's a belief. I'd have to double check that. So, you know, that's, that's.
If you know that, then that would be great.
But could we, you know, at least the fact that we had it reviewed? I know we spent a chunk of money on that. And, you know, it is something, you know, we take seriously and that, and that we had checked out.
Yeah, we can have Keith answer that. All right. So just on the classroom environment and academic supports, we are able to bring back some of the softer materials that we didn't, you know, the rooms were pretty stark last year. So we're able to bring back some of the rugs and softer seating, able to share materials more. So that's great. But as I'm going to, you know, echo again, it's the cleaning of these materials, washing hands, wearing masks, all those are the most important. So it's the strong hand hygiene and the universal masking. And then if there are, there are things that kids are touching on a regular basis, yes, we should be doing some routine surface cleaning for materials they're using as well. Technology will remain one to one for next year as we had an opportunity to do last year. We are using CSO and Google Classroom to support learning because as you know, remote is not an option any longer. So that's why we do want the test and stay protocols in place. We don't want students to have to quarantine if there's any way we can keep them in the classroom. So they would be getting, if they're, if they're not able to access the classroom, they would have asynchronous work provided to them through their technology on CSO or Google Classroom. Now, that gets into this section here. I kind of went ahead on that, that the importance of that test and stay protocol, keeping kids in class. I, I bolded that live remote instruction will not be provided at any level. We just don't have the opportunity to do so. We don't have the ability to bring kids in the way we did last year. Certainly, we know it was not the best instructionally for teachers if they're trying to zoom kids in and have them in person. So that was quite a challenge. But if a child did have an extended home hospital need, then we would put together a plan for an extended absence, just like we would in any, any extended absence in the past, regardless of remote or not remote. Dawn? You're muted.
You're muted, Dawn.
Thank you. I, I guess in terms of, we will not have any live remote instruction at any level during these short term absences, where the absences could be as much as 10 to 14 days. Will there be some type of extended ability for children to make up work that they missed? If a child misses 12 days of school, I, I guess, is that something that administration has talked with the teachers about in terms of, of make up work policy?
I think I'll defer that to Joanie to put together, you know, me with the principals and discuss that as far as, is there, is there going to be any leniency with grading? I mean, I feel like anytime a child has an extended absence, we expect to be able to accommodate them to some extent if they can't do the work while they're sick. Some kids will be able to quarantine and still get their work done because they've gotten it asynchronously given to them the teacher each day through Google Classroom or CSO. But I think in those other exceptions that you're talking about, we would want to see what kind of extensions we could put in place and accommodate. So Joanie, can I have you follow up on that?
Absolutely. I can talk to the principals regarding that. But it might, depending on how long somebody's out, it might be a case by case. But yes, we would, you know, work with that family.
Amanda?
Similarly, for a student in that case who needs to quarantine a lot, do we need to discuss any changes to like truancy requirements? Whether those absences are excused or anything of that nature?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be safe right now to wait for, see if there's any more guidance that comes. I'm hoping we'll get more information. So I'd rather hold on that, but keep that. And Joanie, I'll ask you to make a note on that as well for Kelly to look into moving forward. But yes, all these things are things that we're going to have to work through over the next days. And clearly, anything we put in place is subject to change. And then I'll update the document and get it out as we have changes come. This is our best guess right now as to getting this school year started. But there are, there are some forms in here for home hospital services. If a child is absent more than 14 and less than 60, they have forms to fill out. But I think you're talking about the kid that might be out to quarantine, come back and then go out again. That's, that's what it sounds like you're asking about, right, Amanda? Yeah.
Right.
Okay, we'll look into that further too.
Thanks.
So I have linked here the MMEA guidelines for music and chorus. We still will have some distancing in music and chorus. And we'll be asking students to wear masks inside. We'll also be asking that we wear masks with instruments inside. They'll have the slit, we're going to be asking students to get their own mask with the slits in them. However, we will make sure we purchase some that are available if a student is unable to have it. We certainly don't want students not having the opportunity. It's exciting that we're hopefully going to have a great year with chorus and band, which we didn't have. We had to a much smaller extent last year. So we're hoping to get a positive experience for our students to start the school year. Dawn?
Go ahead, Dawn.
I guess the same thing that we have talked about in terms of eating, is it possible to take chorus and band outside as much as feasible at all levels? I, I think that, you know, when I think back to the elementary levels and at fourth and fifth grade, you have this really large band of students just beginning to learn. You know, sometimes as many as 30, 40, 50, 60 students. Is this another area where we can try and get the kids outside as much as feasible?
Yeah, I, I certainly want to work with the teachers on that and Joanie will as well because that would be ideal if they could just sing outside and then they don't have to have the mask. If they could bring their instruments outside, there might be exceptions to that. They might have to hook up to electricity and things like that that might not make it feasible. But I think if there are opportunities to do it outside on nice days, I'm confident that the teachers in most cases would be open to that if it's going to work out for the kids.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, Catherine.
So are we working on the assumption that there will be band at Miller this year? Because there was not last year.
Yes. If you look at the MME guidelines that are linked in there, Catherine, it'll, it'll show you that, that is the ability to do so. And it comes back to the ventilation. If we're able to have the good ventilation that Keith has described in other documents in here, because we have proper ventilation, we can do up to 50 minutes indoors with the masks on to have band and or chorus.
No, yeah, no, I just meant at Miller specifically because there wasn't last year.
Yes, that is the plan. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, extracurricular. To start the year, we're currently developing protocols for students to either provide proof of vaccination or to participate in weekly COVID testing, particularly for middle and high school, high risk interscholastic activities and extended theater productions. This is still something that we're hoping to work on. And I wanted to propose that to you. We would like to consider that if they're going to be in high risk situations with sports, do we want to consider having them participate either in minimally having a vaccination? And if they can't be vaccinated, to be able to participate in the weekly testing? It would really help us minimize the need to get kids, and again, quarantine kids unnecessarily. So that's something I'd like to have you consider as supporting moving forward.
Has there been any D E S I guidance on that? Do we, are we aware of other school districts that have done that? And has there other public school districts that have done that? And have we received any guidance on that topic?
What I'm hearing currently is that because this is happening so quickly and so late in the summer, people have not made decisions yet. I think everybody's sort of waiting for everybody else to make the decision. So that's why we talked about maybe just for the high risk. And we could go back to the list that we had last year. MIAA put out a list of high risk, medium risk and low risk sports. And then, and then just consider this as a high risk situation. For example, football is high risk. Gosh, I'll tell you what, hockey, you know, the sports that are high contact sports would be the ones that we would consider this for. Open to suggestions, but I, and the whole point is really trying to keep kids able to play as much as possible.
Yeah, I believe Lexington, and there was a couple of other towns that also were looking into that. I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, I think there have been a couple, but I don't know if anybody on, in this neck of the woods has gone that.
No, yeah, it wasn't anything in our Tri Valley leagues, but that way that I could.
And I know that they have just met as recent as yesterday. So I, I really do feel that this is so early that people have not made decisions on that. But we are going to be starting sports very quickly. And obviously, we would have to get the testing in place in order to be able to offer this as well.
Do, is Matt Baker working with the other ADs in the Tri Valley to talk about things like pool testing, et cetera?
Yes, he, he texted me shortly before this meeting. And at this point, the other districts that he's working with have not made decisions on this yet. We are going to be able to welcome spectators at outdoor events. Guidance on indoor events is forthcoming. Performances will occur in person only when feasible, given current public health guidelines and other provisions within this plan. So indoor events, you know, I'm still, I'm going to show you a little further about what I'm recommending for visitors and volunteers. So that will kind of apply to this section as well. Questions so far on that? Okay, I'm going to keep going. So the visitors. So this is, I'm hoping I will have your support on this just because we have so many unknown things and so much late information. I'm just recommending to start the school year, visitors will not be allowed on campus. A limited number of essential volunteers may be allowed to support student needs. However, visitors may be allowed on a limited basis after a successful reopening. That would give us a little time, get through the, you know, opening of school and then we could turn. My hope is to be able to lighten up these things as we move along, but we just have so many unknowns. I would suggest if we are able to allow. I would suggest if we are able to allow volunteers and visitors that they provide proof of full COVID vaccination to be permitted on campus. It doesn't make sense to me to allow additional unvaccinated people on campus, particularly if we get to the point of 80% can be unmasked. And then that could skew our numbers as well, you know? So after-care staff, pre-service educators, so people that are, you know, able to do internships and things or service providers, consultants and things like that, we would still consider them part of our education program and they would be permitted under these criteria.
Dr. Cusco?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dawn.
Oh, could I just ask, under this section, since we brought it up a number of times, the ability to eat outside is going to rely on our ability to have volunteers come and help with that. Is there any way? And while the weather is still nice out especially, is there any way to make sure that we can get that limited number of essential volunteers to assist with lunches? If they can provide proof of, of full COVID vaccination?
Yes, and I, the principals and I talked yesterday, I think it was about this. And I, they're going to send out their own communication because they have different needs and they're only going to prioritize those real critical needs so that we limit the number of volunteers. But absolutely want their help. And I, I think I mentioned it earlier, the middle school certainly struggles with that. Even if the, even if lunch is outside, we want volunteers to help with that. Hopefully, there'll be consistent volunteers, again, trying to minimize people that are just coming one day a week. That just complicates and adds to our numbers and increases the risk a little bit.
Minnie?
When we are talking about visitors, are we also including the parent volunteers to the classrooms?
So at this point, I'm only asking just to start the year with the essential volunteers. So the essential volunteers would be the ones that we need to help us to meet kids' needs. For example, recess, lunch, you know, supervision of children. So I wouldn't be opening, I would not be wanting to open up just for the beginning of the year, classroom volunteers unless we had an essential need. But hopefully, that's something we can consider after. That's, and I know I'm being vague with successful reopening. But I think we need to get through that first month, see where we go. Does the, do the numbers start to get higher? Are we quarantining more? We'll have a better sense of that after a few weeks of, you know, whether it's fair enough to start dialing it down. I will tell you, some of the other district plans I've read, some of them have said no visitors or volunteers at all. And it didn't even talk about revisiting it. I mean, obviously, these documents can be adapted, but they were starting the year with no one even considering volunteers or visitors. And it sounded like the whole school year. I'd like to think that they would revise it later, but. Okay.
Yep.
Assemblies and group gatherings. Large group gatherings be on a limited basis with spacing as available to ensure a safe learning environment. So we're not hoping to have a lot of large group gatherings, but there are going to be some. You know, we did have freshman orientation yesterday. We do have the opportunity in the auditorium holds 918, I believe, students at the high school. So we can have some larger events if we're spreading people out. At least one seat in between or sometimes two seats in between. So it's going to be case by case. We're not going to open it wide, but there are some limited ability to do so. Family meetings. We are going to offer again virtual meetings for 504, parent-teacher conferences, IETT meetings. But there may be some opportunities in a limited manner to have some in-person meetings as possible upon request. So I did talk to the principal. Well, you know, still, I think virtual is going to be safer to start the year, but there might be some essential needs to allow some one-on-one meetings with parents at a limited basis if they request. Right now, we're looking at back-to-school nights and other family events because those are larger events to be either outdoor, in-person, or conducted virtually. We did find a lot of success with our open houses and events last year. In fact, we had such a high participation rate. So, you know, things we learned from COVID is that some of these events can be done very successfully and allow for a larger family engagement. So that is our plan for right now is if we can do them outside, great. If not, we'll work on virtual events for some of these back-to-school nights. Field trips will obviously be at a minimum as well. We do want to consider more field trips than we were allowed to do last year for sure. But using community metrics to determine whether or not they'll take place. Starting the school year, we're looking at only outdoor field trips. And indoor field trips for essential curricular purposes will be considered on a case-by-case basis. They'll have to comply with HPS health and safety protocols. And overnight and international trips will be considered at a later date. I don't know if we'll be able to do them this year, but we'll, we'll see what happens. I do want to think of a way, and Joanie, I'm going to pass this off to you again, if we can talk about a form for people requesting field trips. Because I haven't been involved in the field trip approval process. But I think particularly now, I think we need to have a more centralized approach to approval and have a justification for why it's so critical to curriculum because we want to be able to offer it. But we, we do have to keep it at a minimum still. I think this is the last section. After care, after-school care and use of school buildings will occur. But they have to follow our safety guidelines. And again, after a successful reopening, other outside organizations may be allowed to rent space in our buildings this year outside of school hours and after-school activities. All participants will be required to operate within our protocols. You know, I really don't want us to be, again, that first month. I want to, I think we need this time to get back and get our groove on and get an assessment of what's going to happen when now we have kids all, we've had kids home all summer, they've been outside all summer. Family, parents, and teachers as well. So to give us a little time to get settled and assess whether we're having any upticks would be helpful. So I'm not recommending at least for the start, which we, at least the first month of school, to have rentals. But then considering it as applicable as time goes on, I also have seen some plans from some districts that are eliminating this altogether. I don't want to go that restrictive right now, but I want to have a time to assess if it's okay to do so. I'm going to stop sharing for a minute.
Great. Okay, questions, comments? Great. Dr. Cusco, is this going to be linked somehow on our website somewhere?
Yes, I have it as a draft right now. We'll, we'll make the couple of changes that you noted. I did share it with our HFT president and vice president. And they, they like the format. They have a couple of slight tweaks they want to suggest, so I'll talk to them tomorrow. But yes, my plan would be tomorrow to get this out to parents in a family communication and link it on the website as well.
Okay, and then we'll also link the, the new policy into that document as well that we just.
Yes, I have to put that in, yep.
Perfect. Okay, Amanda and then Catherine?
It seems really thorough and awesome. Did you mention like after-school help, like after-school help with just like you want to say after-school with a teacher?
Oh. So I don't think, I mean, the way it's worded, I, it's not precluding that from happening. Because we are going to have after-school events, extracurricular are going to happen on campus now. Where, where, last year, we had, for example, at the high school, a lot of those extracurricular activities happened virtually. So I'm not expecting that. So our plan is as long as they follow the indoor masking policy, we should be able to have somewhat normal activities after school, which would include extra help.
Thanks. Catherine?
I just have a couple of comments or edits maybe on the self-assessment tool. Can I, can I edit this document and send that to you or is that okay?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't know if you'll be able to edit the assessment tool. But if you wanted to make a couple of comments on the side, that would be helpful and then I could go back in and do that.
Okay.
So there's an assessment tool in, in Power School. So if you did your registration for the year, it, it did have one that was linked on, on Power School. So to say, saying that you agreed to make sure that you did a, you know, daily student checklist. I don't know if anybody had that.
It says Placentino don't do that though, right? Or Placentino and Miller?
Well, at the beginning of the year, what happened was the parents had to testify or assert that they are going to do that each and every day. You're supposed to self-assess your kid, assess your children. And then if you have concerns, you call in and ask the nurse if they think this is a COVID-related situation. And they'll tell you whether to stay home or, you know, what the next steps would be. That that was the case last year.
Right. So it just had a link to the checklist. I just printed it out. But is this, is it the same thing that you're talking about, Catherine, or is it something different?
Earlier in the document, the part that was red.
That was orange, yeah, orange, yeah.
Yeah, just some of the, like, from a medical perspective, some of the things that I would, I would grade differently or think need clarification.
Thank you, yeah. Feel free to put some comments in there and I'll have Missy, you know, add what suggestions work.
Okay. Any other questions? This was very thorough. Thank you, Susan, for putting this together like really, really fast.
Well.
To get there.
Like I said, I have to credit some others. I, you know, we, we share and share alike and I borrowed a lot from others and, you know, no sense in reinventing the wheel. But I had to make it with our team. We made it applicable to hopefully what we need for Holliston.
Minnie?
So when do you think? Yeah, before I did, this is really, really good. There's like, and it's such a detailed document. What I wanted to know that, do you have any idea like when will we know about the time? Is there any timeframe when we can determine if we can know the start vaccination status? Or even like, you know, the students, is there anything?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have a system in place right now. So that's why I need to work with our coordinator on the test and state protocols. And once I have a sense of all of that, we're going to put together a, a way to collect, you know, the vaccination information. It does buy us a little time for the beginning of the year to get this going. I feel better about now that we know that we at least have till October 1st to figure this out. But yeah, that, that is something that we're going to work on right away is figuring out how can we collect vaccinations? What happens if people don't provide them? I mean, it really comes down to the more we know, the more we can, to relax our restrictions. So it's to everyone's benefit to be open and honest, even though it's HIPAA. To, it's not mandatory to share this information. If families share information willingly and staff share willingly, it, it provides us an ability to keep kids on campus and not have to quarantine as much. So it's, it's in our best interest. I just don't know what our timeline is going to be like to get that information into our hands in a timely manner.
You know, someone also mentioned to me like, why can't we just use the vaccination data that we have that we get from Chief Cassidy? And that's, you know, the town of Holliston, but that doesn't necessarily represent what our school community is. Because we have teachers that don't live in the district, we have students who don't live in Holliston. So we have to have, you know, those, that's, that's the population we're trying to reach. So we need to really have accurate data on that.
Yeah, and their age ranges, so they don't necessarily tie up to like Rams. There's an overlap on that data between Rams and high school, so it doesn't tell us which, which grade levels.
Right. Okay. Lisa and then Minnie?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say thank you. I know three or four weeks ago, we probably were hoping we weren't going to be doing this again. But I think, you know, you guys, as always, have done a great job pivoting and making things happen. So thank you, Susan, and to everybody who worked on this. I just, I think we've been talking about all this stuff tonight and I think Susan just alluded to this a little bit. But I think it bears repeating that, you know, if you, setting aside the, some of the controversy about wearing masks versus not wearing masks and who gets vaccinated, who doesn't. I, I think it bears repeating that really, our main goal is one of in-person learning. And we're doing every, I think, you know, this plan represents, I think, the guiding principle that I'm pretty sure we all agree on, which is we want to have kids in person as much as possible. And the way to do that is by following all these health and safety regulations. Have your kids participate in pool testing. You know, the, the masking requirement that the state put down. Everyone who can get vaccinated, get vaccinated. All these things are going to help us keep kids in school in person and not have to quarantine. And, and, you know, that's something that I think most people can agree on. And I think it's really important that we keep that sort of, you know, goal in mind. That what we're trying to do is keep kids in school safely and promote in-person learning.
Absolutely.
We love our students. I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone wants anyone masked. We all want to be able to see their smiling faces. But I will say, the smiles in their eyes when they can stay in school is a good start, right? I mean, the more we keep them in school, the more we do the mitigation, we will get there. I'm hopeful we will get there that we have a place this year that we can be unmasked.
Okay, Minnie, go ahead.
So my question is a little like going back to the vaccination part. So every year, in the beginning of the year, we provide a doctor office data about the vaccines that the kids have received throughout their lifetime. Now, what puts a vaccine on that list that the school can ask for versus, say, a COVID, something like a COVID vaccine that we can't ask the data for because of HIPAA? So what, how does this difference happen? And how does a vaccine get onto that list that can be accessible by, like, you know, we are required to provide it?
Yeah, so my, my understanding is that if the Mass Department of Public Health says it is mandatory to get XYZ vaccines and then doctors say you get the vaccines on your regular checkups. Our children, like, actually, my grandson just got his first vaccine last week and my daughter told me he was crying. I mean, we've been all getting vaccines our entire lives. I'm glad my, my grandbaby is going to be safe right now for what he can get. But that, those vaccines, they happen routinely through children's lives. And those, because they're mandated by the state, those are the ones we can ask for and require to show for school. They have not made vaccinations mandatory for a variety of reasons yet on COVID. So that is why it wouldn't routinely come without us requesting it differently. And we only get that information on periodic basis. You don't supply that every single year, I don't think. Am I wrong? Are you giving?
Sure, I think we give them their health record every single year.
Is it every year now? Okay.
Yeah.
It was a point when you only had to give updates. So I, I'm a little sketchy on that. It's been a while since I had to turn in those forms with my own kids.
I'm sure. The other is that, you know, keep in mind, Minnie, that the, you know, they just had a full approval given to the Pfizer vaccine as of Monday for ages 16 and up. So, you know, we're still pretty new into that process. So I don't think that the state would even recommend having a mandate until that full authorization was offered. That was just my sense. I don't know that from a fact, but that would just make sense to me anyway, so. Okay. All right, great. So I have no warrants to report to the school committee that I did not sign anything this past week. So we will move on to the reviewing and approving of the newsletter content. You're up, Ms. Naborsky. And you're muted, too. Of course. Right when you need to speak.
So we had prepared this in anticipation that there would be a health and safety reopening plan. So we are hoping now to embed the link. But when do we think it might be ready to circulate to the community?
This document?
Yes.
I'm hoping to get it out tomorrow.
Okay.
So if anyone had comments that they needed to, you know, to make. Or I didn't, unfortunately, because I was doing the screen, I didn't take notes. So if there's any other notes that I need to address, those couple of changes, I'm happy to do so.
No, but I think maybe our newsletter should follow after you communicate out the reopening plan. We can share a link to it. So there were three major pieces that we thought we should communicate on. And that was the DESI mask mandate that is in effect until at least October 1st. And we also thought in terms of masking. I think the Massachusetts Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association, MIAA, had stated today that in order to safely maximize full participation of fall sports, they would also be requiring masks for indoors. But they are optional for any outdoor activities for student athletes and coaches. So that was another piece we were looking to communicate out. The statement that I had previously read when we talked about the one-year retroactive contract in terms of ratifying that this evening, that would be included in the newsletter. And then finally, we wanted to do a welcome to new staff members and communicate out our, our welcome and a little background information in terms of Joanie Menard is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And also for Jerial and his position as the district's first ever Director of Social Emotional Learning and, and Equity. So has everybody had an opportunity to review the newsletter? Am I screen-sharing this? How are we doing this?
You could screen-share it. I didn't, I got, I only got down to the very, I didn't completely read through the very end of it. You could screen share it. I didn't, I got, I only got down to the very, I didn't completely read through the very end of it, to be honest with you. Um, I got to Jerry L's, uh, Jerry L Vernier's, is it Vernier? Am I saying it right? Susan Vernier? Jerry L's last name? Nobody's.
Jerry L Vernay.
Okay. Do you want me to read it out loud once I screen share or simply screen share and give you?
Screen sharing it is fine. I think that we can just all review it over. Does anybody have any questions or um, comments about the first? Let's just start from section by section, I guess, Dawn, right?
Yes. There's an embedded link to the um, D E S I mask mandate. And in the, following the, in between the first and second sentence is where we anticipated putting the um, the back-to-school health and safety plan.
Yeah, we can just link to, so I already, I added in back-to-school health and safety plan. So what we would do is just, you know, highlight that and link that once it's online. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. Um, am I, yeah, okay. I don't have any problem with that section or you already read out the statement, so I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm going to scroll down. Yeah. Fast.
Okay. Mine's not scrolling down. Is that just me? Oh, it's slow. Are you already on the second page? Because I'm not seeing it.
I am. Would you like me, I could read it aloud?
No, I'm just going to check. I'm just going to look it on my own screen. I have it pulled up in a separate space. Um, yeah, so I read through um, the welcome to Joni. Yay, Joni. Um, but I didn't, I got, you know, this is where I ended. Was it the last part?
Yeah, I credit Minnie for not only writing up both of these bios, but getting them in like way before anyone else has ever gotten anything before. So yay.
Really? Impressive.
Yep.
Okay. Thinking it needs a couple of paragraphs in here. I don't know. Let's see. It looks fine to me. Does anybody have any comments, questions, up, you know, edits they'd like to propose? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the newsletter as presented this evening.
Can I get a second?
Second. Second by Dawn.
Moved by Stacy, seconded by Dawn. Roll call vote. Ms. Bigelow?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Listevic, yes. Excellent.
I think we can even wait to send it out on Monday, Dawn. Um, we've done that in the past with the newsletter because I know Susan often communicates on Fridays. So Susan, if you're going to send out something tomorrow, does that make sense for us to wait till Monday to send out the newsletter or even Saturday? I mean, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Weekend, it's probably easier for us to do it over the weekend.
Yeah, just if you look in a link, my um, the health and safety protocol, it would be helpful because I want to check with Missy because I know Catherine was going to give us a couple of things for the um, assessment tool.
So is that okay with everybody if we wait till Monday? Actually, we can't do it over the weekend because it's Dan um, who sends it out.
Oh, that's fair.
We could do it Monday.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I think that's fine. That way we're not stealing Dr. Cuska's thunder. Okay. Um, item misinformation. I don't have minutes. If you have minutes, can you please board them on to um, Lisa Aronian from your, your subcommittee, please? Um, our next meeting is Thursday, September ninth at seven P M. We are expected to be in person in the library. Hopefully, the library will be cleared. It was being used for storage or something over the summer. Um, Dawn and I were there like a, like a week or so ago and it was just like chaos and um, somebody's office was right in the middle of that. So I'm hoping that they're able to be back to where they need to be and that we can. Back in the library.
Can I jump? All right, I was going to bring this up during the COVID update. I am not psyched about the idea of meeting in person if we don't have to. I feel like the state has given us the whole year to deal with this and, you know, for me, I mean, I, with the Delta variant, I'm back to doing nothing because I have an unvaccinated child. So I'm back to like not socializing indoors, I'm trying to minimize, mitigate risk as much as possible until he gets vaccinated. And I know other people on the board have children who can't yet um, be vaccinated. So my preference would definitely be to um, meet virtually until, you know, whenever. I mean, hopefully, when everybody gets vaccinated, hopefully that will be sooner rather than later. But I don't have any burning desire to go back in person.
Catherine?
I was just going to echo what I said last time. Um, we talked about this, which is my my problem is that my, my kids are little and so finding someone to put them to bed during COVID land is hard. And they also cannot be vaccinated. So it's just, it, it creates a problem for me trying to find a babysitter. My adored babysitter just left for college. So trying to find a babysitter who can do that really sort of intimate time of the day, but also that can be like in their bedrooms with them. You know, it's not like I'm trying to find a babysitter who can just watch them after school and take them outside and things. It's, it's kind of a different, a different ballgame um, when I'm trying to find someone to put them to bed. Um, so I, I'm repeating myself, I know, because I said this in the spring when we talked about it also. Um, but it's still, still COVID land, obviously, since we've just had a multi, multi-hour meeting, trying to figure out how to exist in this space. But it's a real, it's a real obstacle um, in terms of trying to get out at night and find someone to be in their rooms with them.
Dawn, and then Amanda?
I think that, um, I, I think we need to be sympathetic to that and be flexible. I think that this does afford us a way of all of us are, are um, still able to connect. I think that to the, we have a number of subcommittee meetings um, and many of them have been in person and will continue to be in person. Um, and I'm open to that, but I think we should exercise some flexibility here because we do have members that um, it is difficult to come in for this volunteer position for several hours on a Thursday evening. People um, I, I think that even after the emergency order was lifted, the state has extended this because it works. Um, so I, I'm willing to be flexible here and, and also um, you know, reflect on the needs of the other two committee members that are requesting this.
Amanda?
I was just going to point out, I know this because um, my husband is on Parks and Rec. Um, I do, I do think there's a way for many members to be in person while others are zooming in. Um, I think Travis once sent us an email, so I just, I do know that exists, but I mean, I agree with Dawn. I'm happy to be flexible. Either is fine with me.
Stacy?
We do have the option of being um, hybrid and that's what Amanda is referring to. I think it's critical that we do meet in person, even if it's once out of the two um, meetings a month. I think it's critical where leaders of the district who need to set the example. So if it's safe enough for our kids to be in school, it's safe enough for the seven of us to be together in the library. We can separate out and I'm not, you know, not unsympathetic to, you know, babysitter situations, et cetera. So I'm, I'm happy to be flexible, but I do think we need to meet every, you know, even if it's once a month that we get together. I think it's important for collaboration and cooperation and how we work with one another. Um, you know, Zoom is great when you want to share information out to people, but as a group working collectively together, it's really not always the best tool. And I, I, you know, I had felt this all along. I think it's really important that we, we um, you know, set the example.
I, I'll, I have to agree um, with Stacy. I also feel like we need to also set an example for our own community, our staff and educators and students who are meeting at the schools in a safe way. And we, I think that we can make that work. Um, but I'm also willing to be flexible if we have to figure out some sort of hybrid model. Um, that being said, like, you know, we all knew that when we signed up for a school committee that we were going to have to have Thursday nights free. I'm sure we didn't think that we were expecting we were going to have this uh, the, the meeting schedule we have held for the last eighteen months. But um, certainly I, I would like to try to be flexible and maybe, you know, we can figure out some sort of hybrid, but we can figure that, well, to obviously figure that out offline. I'm not going to waste school committee time on a meeting right now to, to, or, or the public's time to work that logistics out. Um, so, okay, so we'll just continue that conversation. Catherine?
Well, I.
I can hear you.
Did you hear the feedback?
No.
Um, I just want to say that, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do office hours in person and, you know, come in for, get it for policy, uh, policy subcommittee meetings or whatever. It's just to me, it's different when I'm trying to get someone to come into my house for my kids who can't, or are still so little and the timelines for that keeps getting pushed out and pushed out. So it becomes more complicated. I, I agree with the, I mean, we've done this already. We've already done, you know, policy. Um, I made office hours in person, which I'm certainly willing to do, you know, that sort of thing. So I don't disagree with you that we're leaders, but I do disagree with having someone that I'm not very comfortable with putting my kids to sleep at night if I don't know them already. It's a whole other issue, but I'm happy to come to in-person meetings myself.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, um, I will motion to, request a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Dawn.
I'm sorry, uh, moved by Dawn, seconded by Lisa, was that right? Okay, um, roll call vote. Ms. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Gupta?
Yes.
And Mrs. Listevic, yes. Thank you, everyone, and have a nice evening. We'll see you on September ninth at seven P M.